Okay, I'd like to call to order the April 16th, 2015 meeting of the City of Bellingham Planning Commission. And at this time, ask everyone to silence electronic devices. So, cell phones, laptops, anything you've got that's electronic, please mute it for us. Heather, would you please call to roll?
Phyllis McKee?
Here.
Tom Grunstead?
Here.
Ali Taishi?
Here.
Garrett O'Brien?
Here.
Jeff Brown?
Here.
Cerise and Steve Crook have been excused.
Okay, so, we'll go into our agenda in a minute. I've been explaining very briefly what the Planning Commission's about at our meetings, and I'll just do that again, just for the benefit of anyone here or listening, or maybe watching later. So, we're an appointed body by the mayor, and we make recommendations on, typically there's seven of us, two people are absent, we make recommendations to the Planning Director and the City Council on legislative and quasi-judicial actions, like ordinances, rezones, comp plan amendments, and occasionally, we review specific projects. And again, we make recommendations, not decisions. Tonight, we take public comment at most of our meetings. Tonight, we're going to have a public meeting, not a public hearing, but we will still take a comment from people who've shown up to make it, so, about the specific topic of our meeting. And in a minute, we'll have a public comment period for general comment as well. So, first on our agenda is approval of previous meeting's minutes. We've got two sets of minutes. We will take public comment, yeah. March 19th and March 26th, and those are distributed to the commission, and assuming everyone's reviewed them, so if there's no discussion, we could, we could take action on those.
I move that those be approved as printed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion, a second, to approve the minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? And so, both sets of minutes are approved. So, now we'll have a public comment period. So, the public comment period is for anyone who's here who wants to talk about anything other than the topic of our public meeting tonight, which is on the subdivision ordinance update. If you would like to speak about any other topic to us, you're more than welcome to come up to the podium, make some comments, and give us your thoughts. Mr. Kochman? And please just address a name for the record.
Looks like I'm the only one. My name's Jeff Kochman, I went to Barclay Company. 2200 Rimland Drive, out in Bellingham, Barclay. The reason I'm here is, in the next few weeks and couple of months, and maybe longer than that, I understand, or have read, you guys are going to be addressing comp plan changes, or proposed changes, UGA boundaries, that sort of thing. At Barclay, we will be submitting a letter to you, just to suggest or propose some things for Barclay that we would like to ask, that you look at or consider. We've had a track record now, done a lot of stuff, we have a lot more, or a long ways to go. And just in looking at the underlying, you know, zoning, the makeup of the district, and what all exists there, our interest is to propose changes that actually make it work. We feel better, and we'll, I mean, right now, we've worked with what we have, but we obviously, or we want to try to make it so it will work better. So, again, I'll look forward to that, probably get it to you within the next week or so. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Brian Jones, 1321 Suracourt, Bellingham, or Wachem County, Bellingham, on the border The EIS for the draft comprehensive plan amendments has been out for a while, and on the third, last Monday, they had a public hearing. And having read the document, and then being presented with the city's staff ideas about their alternatives for growth, I've noticed that the, that draft EIS seems to exclude some of the alternatives that you guys are studying right now. Just, I'm not saying it does, I'm not an attorney, but for instance, under the third alternative for the multi-jurisdictional growth, they say there's going to be no UGA expansion. That's what their document says. And it seems to me that at least one of the alternatives being discussed by planning staff at the city is to expand their UGA a little. So, I wouldn't, you may want to, to send them a letter, say, hey, our options are not closed yet, are they? Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Hi, Linda Twitchell with the Building Industry Association. I'm just going to suggest, if at all possible, in the coming months, as we get going with the comp plan, we try not to have planning commission meetings for the county and city on the same night, the way we are tonight. I don't know who coordinates that, and I know everybody's going to have meetings coming fast and furious, but if there's any way to try and do it so we're not having competing meetings, that would sure help all of us who are trying to kind of follow what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Kurt, are they typically on Thursdays out there at the county?
Same, aren't you?
Yeah. Okay, so it looks like that's it for public comment, not related to the subdivision ordinance. So, we will close the public comment period. And tonight's meeting is primarily focused on a work session to discuss the subdivision ordinance update that we have been working on for a while. We had an initial meeting, I think, in December, and another in February. We've had some subcommittee meetings since then, so that's the plan tonight. Let's talk about subdivision ordinance. I'm going to turn it over to Kurt and Kathy.
Thank you. You just gave my presentation. So, Mr. Taishi, you were correct. The city staff first presented the update to the subdivision ordinance in December of 2014. And the primary reason for that first meeting was to introduce to many of you, and to the public as well, the basic components of not only the subdivision ordinance, but what is a subdivision. It is a very technical land use provision that we have, and we will be asking you for direction, guidance, and ultimately, a recommendation to City Council on some very technical code provisions. And so, we felt it was important to give you a good foundation, and as necessary, we may need to assist further as we go through to start to answer the questions, how? How do we make it better? How do we change it? We're clearly not there yet, though. In that meeting, what staff did ask you to do is to adopt some process goals and objectives, which you did. And those goals and objectives are contained in this staff report as Exhibits A and B. And what staff intended to do with those goals and objectives is to, is to begin framing the key issues, and identifying the key issues that are, that exist in the subdivision ordinance. And we began to do that with the foundation and the guidance of those goals and policies, but more importantly, we sought out the advice of the Planning Commission, a subcommittee of the Planning Commission, which we call the subdivision committee, for lack of imagination. And we presented some draft key issues and a process flowchart to them. And those are attached to the staff report as Exhibits C and D, and I will show those up on the overhead in a moment. And we had a very well-attended meeting. I'm going to say we had roughly anywhere from seven to 10 people, which far surpassed what I was anticipating, so that was encouraging. We had some neighbors, neighborhood associates, we had some general public, and mostly developers. The subdivision committee recommended that we forward, as it was presented to them, the key issues and draft process flowchart to the Planning Commission. And prior to doing that, just as one additional step, just to ensure that we heard our technical groups correctly in the beginning, that we were framing the issues properly, we went back to a modified technical group. In the beginning, we had three groups that consisted of four people each. They were charged with looking at existing regulations, existing process, and also some forward-thinking. You know, what are we not doing that you've heard of, or, you know, you've always said, wow, I wish we could do something like this. So, of those 12 members, we consolidated that down into five members, and we met with them back in March, and they also agreed that staff has framed the issues appropriately, and agreed with the subdivision committee. So, we are here tonight to present those to you, and to ask for your direction, that staff can begin to look at how to approach those issues. Are they issues that actually need to be changed, such that there will be new code language? Are they issues that staff shouldn't consider in code updates? I mean, a lot of these were just brain dumps. There were things that we had thought of, that maybe were good ideas at the time, but once we do more analysis, maybe they won't be great ideas. Through the process, we'll probably come up with more. So, this is not meant to be an all-inclusive, this is all we're ever going to look at, because I think as we continue to do these group reviews, I think more ideas are going to come forward. The idea is, with the key issues that we identify this evening, and the direction that you provide us, staff would go back and begin to do analysis, and then, as determined necessary, meet with a subdivision committee again. And to just continue to identify the issues, identify alternatives, and actually start drafting code. And once we work through those processes, and we think we have a subdivision ordinance that's ready, prepared for the Planning Commission's recommendation to City Council, we would then reconvene as a whole. And I guess I should at least introduce that the planning, the subcommittee is, consists of Steve Crooks, who is not here this evening, Ali Taishi, and Garrett O'Brien. And the idea is to bring in some of the planning commissioners in a smaller setting, to where we can have more informal discussion, but report back what our findings are. And essentially, that's what we're doing this evening, is we're reporting back what has occurred at not only the technical group meeting, but also the subcommittee meeting as well. We are anticipating, but we are not certain, that we would be back before you, probably sometime early summer, August, September, hoping to have something ready for your recommendation. So, this is not something that we want to see done quickly. We want to make sure that we thoroughly vet the issues, that we provide the analysis, have the opportunities to reach out to the public, reach out to the developers, reach out to the homeowners, and also staff. There are a lot of other concurrent chapters in the subdivision, I mean, in the municipal code that are being amended concurrently, and we, so we've, and/or proposed, and so we need to make sure that these are all going to mesh together as well. So, we really need to go through this process slowly, methodically, and most importantly, thoroughly. So, that's how we intend to proceed with this, as just a very broad overview. So, what I'd like to do now is go to the podium and kind of start with the draft, the draft flowchart. Do you have anything you want to add? Okay. So, I guess what I will do, so I will make this bigger, and then we'll scroll, scroll through as we go through time. How's that? And some of this actually may get cut off. So, this is going to somewhat take us back in time, but I think it's important, again, to know where we've been, to kind of know where we hope to go forward. So, as you can see, what, what we did is, after the December Planning Commission, is we drafted a process schedule and a preliminary menu of key issues, and those are what are before you, is Exhibit C and D in the staff report. This is actually Exhibit C, and then D are the key issues. Then we met with the Planning Commission Subcommittee, which is what we talked about. And what we did, what we, what we included in this preliminary process step is that we may need to refine that menu and schedule before we review it with the technical groups and city staff. And we did not need to do this process step, because the Subcommittee agreed with what we had presented, but we did at least evaluate that, and then we went to these new, next steps. This is where we are right now. We're at the Planning Commission, no, I'm sorry, we did not go back to the Planning Commission Subcommittee, because everybody agreed to where we are. This is where we are today. And as you can see throughout the process, I'm only going to show the upper half, and we'll go down below in a minute, is that we will begin to work with the Planning Commission Subcommittee, and we'll begin to prepare recommendations. And it'll probably be a, work with the committee on set topics, prepare a recommendation, go back to the committee, prepare a recommendation, until we've got something holistic that we can bring back to the Planning Commission. And this is where we anticipate coming back, with the option of having another work session, if we feel it's needed, and if it comes out of the Subcommittee, or if the process goes smoothly, and we feel like we're, we are ready to present for a recommendation, then we can certainly go to that point. What is important to notice about this process flowchart is that there's a continuum of public involvement throughout the process. And what this is intended to show is, not only is there a continuum of community involvement, but there's also these key issues, or these key points in time, when the public will actually have the opportunity, such as this, to get up and be able to speak about certain topics, or the subdivision in general. One of the confusion, one of the confusing issues that did come forward from Ms. Twitchell is, because there are no dates, this could be confusing. And so, the question was, oh my gosh, we're ready to go to the BIA, but we haven't been noticed that you're coming, and what is happening? And we do apologize for that confusion. It's easy to see, after somebody pointed that out, what the confusion is, so we would certainly need to fix that. It's just somewhat ironic that these two lines happen to match up, or these don't match up with anything. So, the idea is, while staff is moving through the Planning Commission, whether it's in Subcommittee, or whether it's in the Planning Commission of the whole, there's a continuum of public involvement. And during that time, staff will also be presenting to the BIA, to MNAK, what progress we're making, and, and some lesser detail, what we're presenting here this evening. So, there's three tiers of review that are occurring, they're happening, they're happening concurrently, and as necessary, updates will be given to those parties that either A, request it, and/or we feel we need to reach out and communicate with. So, this is what we've presented as a process, just to the Planning Commission recommendation. We have not gone yet to what the council process is, and we're anticipating that the council process will probably begin in early of 2016. So, again, this is not something we're trying to rush through, we're truly trying to find the issues, and to frame the issues, and come up with solutions that are going to work for the City of Bellingham. So, what we ask you is for direction, is, do you believe this is the process that we should move forward with? Is it excluding something that should be, you know, provided in this public process? Are there more groups we need to reach out to? We're just really asking for your direction as we move forward, because now we're going to start getting into the nitty-gritty, we're getting into the details. So far, we've been at such high elevation, now we're going to really start writing code, and the opportunities to comment are going to become prevalent at this point. So, we would like you to consider this, it's not set in stone, as we go through the process, we go, wow, this is something we really need, it can be changed, and it can be amended. So, this isn't a, your only opportunity, or staff's only opportunity, or the public's to say, hey, I think that we should have something else within this. So, that's one aspect that we will be asking for your direction this evening. And I will somewhat let you decide before we go to the next issue, because as you can see, there is a lot more conversation to be had, that is not what I wanted to do. There's a lot more print on this page, and therefore, there's a lot more discussion that the planning commissioners and the public may want to have with this information. So, whether you want to move into this, and then at the end, discuss everything, or if you want to discuss the process flowchart, let that move aside, and then go to this in more detail, I'm totally open.
Thoughts, Garrett?
I think it'd be a good idea to talk about the, the process and the timeline real quick before we get into, into the issues too much, if that's...
Yeah.
Okay, let me go back.
I have a question, Kathy.
Yes.
Are we, at our Subcommittee meeting, we, we went through each of the items?
Yep.
The menu of key issues, and kind of talked about each one, and affirmed that it was something that, or not, that it was something that we wanted to keep in the pool of ideas. Is that the idea tonight as well, that the full body will get a chance to go through each one, and ask questions if they have them, and, and then we're all going to kind of head nod our way through, including, or not including these things?
That was the exact question I was going to ask you, of how you would want to proceed. I mean, we were able to, with public comment, conclude that in an hour and a half, and we went through some pretty in-depth conversations, so...
At the Subcommittee?
Yeah, Subcommittee, with, you know, the people presenting. So, it, I'm, I can also leave that to you for some discussion of how you would want to proceed. Some of them, I mean, as we all want to, we want to start to answer the question, how? But that's not what we're here tonight for, that's what's going to come later. And, and we did get wrapped up in that a little bit, it's hard not to, because your mind starts coming up with all these creative ideas. So, we can, we can proceed either way, we could quickly go through, and if there's something that jumps out, I mean, my assumption is that the planning commissioners have read the packet, if they have questions, they could certainly start with questions, we could entertain those, we can do the same with the public, we can, we can proceed. I think it's important to at least go through and, and identify what those issues are, and what's intended by those, how much of a discussion we truly need to have, I think that we can kind of leave that for a moment.
Well, I, I know Garrett and I had a first crack at this, but I do think there's some value in giving everybody a chance to go through each item individually, because once we go from this point, then we're getting into the how, and I'd like to know that at least a majority of us who are here, you know, are on board with these things. So, I'm okay with that. I, one question I'd like to pose to the, to the group is, is regarding public comment, we're going to give people an opportunity to comment tonight, will we want to take that at the end of our run-through, or prior to getting into the details with Kathy? There's probably pros and cons to both, and your thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we, it may be valuable, before we get into too much discussion, to hear a comment.
Yeah.
In case it, you know, changes the way we want to address the process. I, I do have a quick question on...
Process?
On this, yeah.
Me too, so go ahead.
We do that now, and then maybe take public comment?
You bet.
Going back, I mean, we've had a few meetings here, Subcommittee meetings, and technical groups, that go all the way back to December. You know, personally, I feel like the involvement from stakeholders, getting to this point, has been robust. There's been quite a bit of input from different stakeholders, advisory groups, you know, communities, neighborhoods, trade groups. So, I think the issues that we've identified as being needed to be looked at are well-vetted. Can we anticipate that same level of stakeholder involvement as we get into the actual writing of code, and writing of the ordinance?
I think the, that is going to become more important as we get into that code, because most importantly, we're going to, it's going to need to be seen by so many people to make sure that the objective of what we're trying to reach is actually going to be reached with the way that code is proposed. So, yes, I was, that's clearly the intent.
Because where we're at on the process right now is Planning Commission Workshop. So, the, to the left of that, backing up, the Planning Commission Subcommittee, that meeting didn't happen, right?
There was really no need for that to happen, because the previous Subcommittee meeting, there were no recommendations suggested by the technical group or staff, to where we would need to come back to you to go, okay, here were some additional changes, are they worthy of bringing forward to the Planning Commission?
And then, just below that meeting, you know, arrowing down, there was a couple stakeholders listed there, Mayor's Neighborhood Advisory Committee, BIAW, in the, the update is listed, did that occur at that time?
So, we have not gone forward to the BIA yet, and I know that that is something we are going to be presenting. And right now, we felt that, because there were so many members within the BIA, the developers essentially, and the technical groups, that we felt we had a good representation of at least framing the issues, but we certainly are going to go to the BIA to present where we are, and, and similar to what we're doing here tonight, but in a, in a condensed fashion, we want, we need and want their involvement. MNAK is scheduled for next month, and again, we will give them an overview, like what we're doing here this evening, but probably not get into the same level of detail.
Right.
But know that there's resources available, if there are certain advisory members that want to have that discussions with staff.
The last question, on the future Subcommittee meeting that's listed after our workshop here this evening, that, at that point, we'll have some concrete, you know, proposals, or change, you know, draft to look at, at that point?
Yeah.
And that would be open to anyone in the community?
Right. So, for example, we, we will take one of these issues on Exhibit D, and say it's pipe stems. Staff will go, and we'll do our research, we'll do our analysis, we'll, we'll pull in everything we can, and we will come to, and there may be more than one topic, but just talking about one, we would then come to the Subcommittee and say, this is what we've learned, this is what we would like to present. And there may be options, there may only be one, we may say, for these reasons, we don't think it needs to be changed. And then the Subcommittee would then provide that additional direction, and yes, we would plan to go back to the, the technical groups, because you can't bring them along so far, and then drop them off, because that's, that's when it's really getting important.
Right.
So, that, that's the idea of what we would do, is we would come through with some issues, some items, we would discuss those, but staff would be prepared with some alternative ideas, and Subcommittee may say, no, we don't like them all, we don't think this is a reason they're going to work. Fine, we go back and we work with it, and we try to figure out what we can do.
Okay.
So, that's kind of the idea, and then at the end of the day, we go to the Commission as a whole, for a recommendation to City Council, which will look and feel like a brand-new subdivision ordinance.
So, the next Subcommittee meeting would be good for people to attend, if they wanted to hear the concrete changes that are being proposed, or the options that are being proposed, and then they could submit written comment, or...
Yes.
And weigh in on that, they'll know what's being discussed.
Right. So, we intend, as we have so far, to notice and provide the materials to the Subcommittee meetings, exactly how we do to the Planning Commission. So, two weeks in advance, the materials, the noticing, so that people have time to ask questions, prepare, you know, their, their thoughts, and, and to come. So, clearly, they are meant to be open, they're meant to, to be the workshops, so that we can get the best results that we can.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Well, I also have a process question. I, when I read the packet, not having been involved in the committee meeting, you know, I, I went through it, and I thought, okay, well, this makes sense to me, these look like good things to do, and that was that. And I wasn't really sure what kind of discussion would follow from this high-level discussion, because it seemed like the nitty-gritty of where the trade-offs are, from what neighborhoods want, versus, you know, what developers want, that's further on down the line. And I actually don't know what I can really contribute at this point, or what you would expect from us in terms of any kind of conversation at this point, other than just getting an overview of what's going on. So, I'm just a little bit at a loss, because when I looked at it, I don't know what kind of conversation, or what level of conversation was expected tonight, versus just sort of informational, this is where we're going, and the real grist of it comes at a future meeting.
I think it's a little both, and I think it's important, we started out this process with an information session. There's, there's a lot of information in here that I'm going to get... guess, there's members of the public and commissioners that don't quite know exactly what we're talking about. I feel very uncomfortable moving forward without having at least a good basis of an understanding, because if we're raising an issue and we're discussing pros and cons, and you're thinking that's great, but you don't understand what the issue is, you can't really understand the pros and cons. But if we can inform what the issue is and the cause and effect, then I'm hoping that that will help you prepare an informed recommendation to the council. Because we are very high elevation, and I agree with that. But I want to make sure that we bring you along with us. And that's truly what tonight is intended to do, just as the public. So we, this is a completely different approach from what we've ever done, because normally, we'd have code right here, and we'd be discussing code. And that's not the framework that the Planning Department works in anymore. So we really want to bring you with us. And we do that by having these types of discussions. I don't know what kind of discussion we're going to have tonight. And in part, you guys are going to help lead that, and the public's going to help lead that, so.
Jeff, just so you know, when we had our Subcommittee meeting, there were items on this list where the discussion was like birds tripping, and we all just looked at each other and went, yeah, that's definitely something we want to talk about. And there was no discussion at all, because we kind of felt the same way. So I think Kathy's right. Well, if there's stuff in here that we want to talk about, we can get into the details. And we definitely did that a little bit at the meeting. But there's definitely some things that I think we're all going to agree on very quickly, one way or the other, and move through, and go from there. Any other questions? Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, I have just one question on this thing. You've got MNAK and the BIA as stakeholders. Has the city reached out to any quote "environmental" unquote groups, like NUCX, Semen Enhancement, or the Audubon Society, or any, for any input at all?
No. And part of our rationale for that, and this is some of the complexities of the subdivision ordinance is, as I think you know, we're updating the critical area ordinance. We're updating this. We're having streets that are intended, or at least projected to be looked at for amendments this year. We're having some street tree amendments coming. So there's all these things coming. But some of those more environmental stakeholders, the interesting thing about the subdivisions is that stormwater and critical areas really take control over everything else. So their focus really is already being protected in those resources, meaning in those rules and regulations. Those are what apply first, and then we look at, we look at what's left to develop. And that's truly how it should work. Certainly, we're open to that, but no, we haven't. And most of the thought around that is, if there are these other influences, there are already, through other codes, being implemented. And we may be off on that. And if we are, then certainly, we would like to know that. That's why we're having the discussion tonight.
Okay, I just had two quick questions. It says possible hearing at the end. Have we already met our obligation for public hearing for this ordinance? And that would be like an optional choice, or do we have to have a public hearing later?
We will need to have a public hearing later.
Okay. I don't not want to have one. I just want to understand if it's optional or mandatory, just for my own benefit.
It will be mandatory. We have not had a hearing on the merits yet, on the actual proposal that we would be asking for a recommendation to go forward. Technically speaking, the first one should have been a meeting and not a hearing, but...
And so when we get there, I imagine we'll have a pretty robust, full commission meeting, workshop, to discuss the recommendations that the committee comes up with. And that will give our other commissioners a chance to really participate in the how kind of discussion, based on our recommendations. But, so we could end up having a couple meetings at the end or something like that. That triangle doesn't necessarily mean one consolidated work session and public hearing.
It could be continued.
Long do, five-hour.
Yes, for sure. Yep.
Planning session. Okay. So the only other question I have, this is just, I'm not sure, because I haven't participated in the Subcommittee before this one, is they're noticed. Can other Planning Commissioners come to the Subcommittee meetings, or does that create a problem for public meeting notice?
We would have to get back to you on that, but I know one of the things is a quorum. And I know like when City Council have those Subcommittee meetings, we have to make sure of the quorum. And even if they're not participating, I think we would have to, unless Kurt knows. I don't know specifically, but I know that there is an issue with a perceived quorum in a room. So...
And that's a noticing issue, right?
That's correct.
I feel like I've seen Council Subcommittee meetings where there's like a couple Council members just hanging out, listening in. And I don't know, I'm just curious, for the benefit of those members who aren't, if they wanted to come. Is that even allowed, kind of question? So maybe if you could look into it for next week, since we don't have one for a while? We got a meeting next week, we could...
And the other thing, if the other commissioners are interested, we are preparing minutes, meeting notes, I guess they would be more like when we have the Subcommittee. So if that is something of interest, those can certainly be sent out with the Planning Commission materials as well. So if you want to follow and kind of have ideas and/or comment, or we can do that as well, if that seems helpful and appropriate.
Okay.
That seem, you can choose to read it or not read it, but you can't say you didn't know.
Email.
Don't bother printing paper.
No.
For me.
Yeah, so email.
Email would be great.
Yeah, include it. Okay.
Okay, great, thanks. So do we want to discuss the process chart as a group? Does anybody have any comments on it? It looks pretty broad and flexible and all-encompassing to me. I think we're getting head nods all around, Kathy, that this is an okay plan So with that, do we want to have the public speak before we get into the details? It sounds like that might be the best plan.
Okay.
Give you a break in the middle. Okay.
Do you want me to leave anything up, or?
It's fine.
Okay.
Leave it. Okay, so we'll have an opportunity for the public to comment now on this topic, and then we'll get back in. So when you're done, you know, please feel free to stay and listen in to the presentation and any discussion we've got. So if anyone would like to say anything about this topic, I only saw one name on the list, but maybe someone else wants to come down, too. Now's the chance. Come down, name and address, and, you know, try to limit your comments to just three or four minutes if you can. And actually, the first name on the list is Rob Weston. Rob, do you want to say anything?
No, I just...
Okay. So we'll jump to whoever's next.
Hello, Eric Scott, Burchwood neighborhood. It actually says on the meeting notes, so you don't have to say your address.
Oh, well, feel free not to.
Burchwood neighborhood. Not really prepared for this. I'm just kind of trying to get up to speed on the subdivision. So just reading through some of the points on this, the Group A, many of key issues. I see a lot of things that are detrimental to the people of Bellingham. And yes, like Tom brought up, there was no invitation to environmental groups to comment on this. These are, we're talking about major loss to some of our woods and wetlands. And I think that would be very good to have environmental groups' input on that. Not, obviously, of course, a developer would rather just develop it, but I think, you know, comment from environmental groups is very important. Something like, you know, some of the issues on the menu of key issues, Group A, lot standards, many of the current dimensional standards are legacies of older development patterns. As land use patterns have changed nationwide in residential areas, certain standards are no longer important. Now, I would bring up on that, it says who. You know, we like our open neighborhoods, our open space. We like our livable communities. We, you know, I don't know who said that. No longer important in establishing a character of the area. Well, there are definitely neighborhoods in Bellingham that have an established character of larger lots, open space, and we don't want higher and higher density. So again, I'm more of another detriment, I think, to the people of Bellingham. See, Exhibit A, this is Point A, process goals. It's just on the, what I got from downloading from the internet. So Point A, establish standards that respond to the unique characters of the city's remaining vacant land and opportunities for development within existing neighborhoods. Again, that would be a loss for that neighborhood. I mean, that open space and whether it's a woods or wetlands is an asset to that neighborhood. So to see it as an opportunity for development would be a loss for those people. Establish a broader range of permitted housing types and land uses within the plat approvals. So broader range, I'm assuming that means multifamily and single family, or essentially multifamily, whether it's detached ADUs or such. And again, that would be a detracting from that neighborhood and those people, especially the Burchwood neighborhood. We have some large lots that, you know, we've had some of our gardens, or they call it the victory gardens, go back to World War I supposedly. It's a very, very nice character. We like that. We want to maintain that. So we don't want to lose that. We don't want more density in the Burchwood neighborhood. Point D, establish provisions that grant the Director of Administrative Authority to deviate from subdivision standards in certain defined circumstances. Again, deviate how? Would it be, would be to lower the standards? Again, it'd be a loss to that community and the city at large. That's about all I found right now in the few minutes that I looked this over. Thanks.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak tonight? Okay. That is it for public comment?
Go ahead, Gary.
Oh, no problem. And it looks like Kurt, you want to say something?
Well, I was just going to ask whether or not we were going to have more comment on the rest of the information that we haven't presented tonight and walked through, and whether this initial comment period was just talking about the update process and just kind of our steps. Is that what you were intending?
No, I imagine this would be...
You wanted it completely for all of it.
Anybody's chance to say anything they want tonight about the subdivision ordinance, say it now.
And I guess this is a question, would you also entertain the format that we've been doing in past Planning Commissions, as at the end of the hearing, after we've had the discussion that's occurred, that you would reopen that for the public to respond or correct factual errors that are anything at that time, or?
Yeah, we could do that. I don't know if that's something we'll do at every public meeting. We'll definitely do that at all public hearings, but because there's so few people here, that seems reasonable. Are you thinking that people might learn something and then want to say something else?
Essentially, yeah.
That makes sense. So yeah, we could definitely do that. So if you're interested in learning from staff tonight, and then make another comment, that's okay. So, but with that, we'll stop for now, and I think give it back to Kathy and Kurt to get into the details of this.
I think one of the precursors, and we've mentioned it every meeting, that we've talked about, and I failed to mention that in the beginning here, the subdivision ordinance does not dictate zoning. It does not dictate density. It's more of how development occurs. So it's, this is not intended to increase the densities of the neighborhoods. So if you're in a 20,000 zone, you will be in a 20,000 zone. This doesn't affect that. But that is not to say, and I will not say, that it won't increase the built density, because it very well could increase the built density. But we are not changing the zone density. So that's something that we feel is very important to bring forward, because while we're looking at the innovative housing types, and we're looking at smaller lots in certain neighborhoods, and as we move forward, those do not include comp plan amendments and/or rezones. So we are working within our existing framework of our existing zoning code right now. And Title 18 is not a part of our zoning code. So there's a very slight distinction that I want to make sure that we understand. The intent here is truly about trying to find a way within the existing zoning regulations, unless they're changed through other processes, to maximize utilization of the land that we have, and while still maintaining all the goals and policies of the comp plan. Because certainly, that's one of the things that we're going to need to present to you, is that our draft ordinance is still consistent with a comprehensive plan. Is that, it's a very distinct, but a very important point.
Thank you.
So having said that, I kind of, I would like to start just by going over the framework of how this is laid out, and then I'll probably focus on just the two left-hand columns of this table. So what we did is we broke these up into two groups. One primarily are those items that we got out of our technical group, when we initially met with them, the three groups that I talked about previously, existing processes, existing standards, and future thinking. And we presented them with their mission to make sure that they're looking at the process goals that initially the Planning Commission had adopted or recommended. So what this is intended to do is to identify the key issues, the opportunities of looking at alternative code provisions, and then the pros and cons, because there could be a pro, but there's a con. And that's the balance that we're going to look at when we start to answer that question of how, is it really worth it? And then how those address or are consistent or meet the process goals and objectives. So that's the framework for what we have laid out here. But I think the bulk of what we will discuss, and what I want to do, just for the members and the audience and on TV, is I want to look at primarily these two columns. And as we need to, we can go to the pros and cons as well. So Group A, as I stated, are those that have been brought to us, staff, as items that are believed would benefit from having additional future analysis to weigh the opportunities and look at the pros and cons. Group B that is attached are what staff is recommending and will be recommending that they move forward. And those are either from the chat recommendations back from 2013, which we talked about previously, and items that are known, meaning they consistently come up in everyday business as identified real issues, and also those that are necessary to comply with state law. And we'll go through those quickly, too. But we identified those as, staff isn't so certain about the first group, Group A. We really want your feedback on that. Group B, we feel very confident that all of those items should be considered through the update process. So yes.
Kathy, can I just ask a stupid Norwegian question? You threw out an acronym, CHAT?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, and I have to get, it's the Community Wide Housing Affordability Task Force.
Thank you.
And they initiated as a task force that included many cross-jurisdictional, county, city, and other community members. And in 2013, the mayor reconvened CHAT, but a subsection of that specific to the city of Bellingham. And that's where some of these recommendations came out. And thank you for your Norwegian-ness, if that's a word, or Norwegianism, or whatever you want to call that. So if we can just dive in, this is pretty much, Jeff, to your comment, is we just sat down and we started going through them, kind of to give you some idea of what we do today, and what may or may not be working, and what are the opportunities should we explore alternative ways of doing it. So lot standards. Currently, lot standards are defined by the zoning of a piece of property. So if you are in a zone of 7,200 or less, so to add confusion, if you have 7,200 minimum lot size, 10,000 square foot minimum lot size, 12,000, 15,000, or 20,000, you have a minimum lot width requirement of 60 feet. If you're in a zone, or if you're in an area that has a minimum lot size of 6,875, which is a very odd number, but it just so happens that they're on platted lots... is a very odd number, but it just so happens that there are platted lots in C home neighborhood that have lot widths of 55 feet, so guess what the lot width is? 55 feet. That's the requirement. If you're in a 5,000 zone, for the most part, you're required to have a 50-foot lot width because the majority of the city is either platted at 50 by 100s or 25 by 100s, and that two combined gives you that 50 by 100. So there's a theme associated with that. A lot of our densities and our zoning were imposed because of the existing character of the neighborhood. Some of the things we talked about, and we had the ability to use the whiteboard, and we had some additional flexibility when we met at subcommittee, is that there are opportunities out there that we believe, and what the technical group believed, that should be further explored and not, it's not in every situation that somebody has enough square footage to subdivide a piece of property and have that existing home be in just that perfect location where you can further subdivide under these lot standards. Maybe there's some flexibility. The density is there for maybe one more, maybe two more, but our existing regulations don't allow that. So again, we're looking at the density as a base density. We're not changing that, but as we stated, we may be, through some of these, they may actually increase the built density. So those are some things we've looked at, some examples that we threw out. Some communities out there just have a standard number, and that number can be just be picked. Some have a standard number, but say if you butt an alley, then maybe your lot width is reduced. They also, many communities now have what they call a lot width circle, and basically what that is, is on the properties, if you can, it has a diameter, say a diameter of 50 feet, diameter of 60 feet, again, whatever that magical number is, if it can be placed on pieces of property, those are your defined buildable areas, but it also demonstrates that you've got neighborhood character of creating a buildable area that's consistent with the others in the neighborhood. So there's many different tools. We're not here to say, what is the best tool? We're not here to suggest that the lot standards aren't working the way they're working, but we think they deserve to be explored. They were last updated in the late 90s when we did our subdivision ordinance. They have worked well. In some neighborhoods, they haven't worked well in others. So we're presenting this as an issue that we believe should be moved forward for further And I'm just going to go through each one unless there's discussion. Do we want to kind of stop for questions, discussion, understanding of each?
I just had a question. You allude to places where things didn't work and then places where they did work. I'm a little hazy on, could you give us some examples on things that were problematic under the current code, or things that worked especially well, so we can get some kind of grounding on that?
And we can, and I mean, I can verbally do that, because I thought we were going to be at such a high elevation, clearly those are the things when we come back in a lot of detail, we're really going to hammer in. And so, because we want you to, most importantly, understand what it is, because you shouldn't change something if you don't understand what it is and if it's working or not working. So we will do that. We will have, again, those in-depth conversations as we go through this. But kind of working together with lot standards and then two items down, two items down pipe stems. You can, you can create the lot widths, and you can create some false pipe stems that the code allows, and you can create a neighborhood character, such as in Roland and Raymond, that clearly could be potentially much better utilization of land. It's hard without seeing it, Phyllis, and I understand that, but we will definitely bring back those examples to you. Where it does work well are in the very well-established neighborhoods where you have the Columbia, you have the lettered streets. Birchwood is mentioned tonight, it's a very unique area. Almost all the lots are platted at 80 feet, and the way our current regulations are drafted, you can have a 20-foot pipe stem everywhere except Birchwood and Columbia neighborhoods. So if you do the math and you require 60-foot of lot width, and you require 30 feet of pipe stem, that's 90 feet. But the other thing that's interesting to identify is that, I'm not going to throw a number out, but we will when we come to the pipe stem issue, because we need to be prepared with our analysis. Many of the lots in the Birchwood neighborhood currently do not have enough site area to subdivide, even if the regulations were changed. So there are some, I'm not going to say competing factors, but there are a lot of factors that are going to go into our decisions when we really start looking at how changes might occur. And those are important things, because there is a character, but at the same time, there are pieces of property out there that potentially are underutilized, and we want to be able to provide opportunities. And there are a lot of short plats out there where there's been a lot of creativity, where we haven't necessarily been able to say, mm, don't think we can go there, because the codes don't allow us to have that discretion. So that's a lot standards. Are there any other discussion on that one?
So just from not being involved in this, it seems like there, there's a pretty heavy weight given to neighborhood character. And what seems a little bit apparent to me is that, you know, we've come a long way since some of these neighborhoods have been platted. In the old days, you would just sit there and do a grid. If you had a wetland, you'd fill it. If you had a high spot, you'd scalp it. And you got this cookie cutter of just grids. And that's the neighborhood character. And it seems that when you're dealing with critical areas, you know, you're dealing with a whole different situation. You might have linear flow, you know, around curves, around topography, you're working with a site, and I guess to the point of the, you know, having an environmental organization at the table, I think there are competing interests there. There's the interest of developing a site with some environmental sensitivity and trying to figure out a way to make the site work with the flow of it versus matching a 1950s or 1930s neighborhood character. And, you know, that's a comment more than a question, but I can see, you know, it'd be really nice to stress test those competing ideas when we get to that point and talk a little bit about that, because, you know, as much as I like a lot of neighborhood character, that's not the only consideration here, so.
And we address that definitely in the con, one size may not fit all. And so we are definitely aware of that situation, and that's the idea of what opportunities are out there that the existing code is not allowing to occur, and how can we do that and still maintain the goals and policies of this comp plan? And infill and character are definitely two, but there are many, many more.
Well, I thought I had an original thought you guys had never thought of before.
No, I just, you framed it-
I'm sorry.
You framed it very well, though, probably much better than any of us could have, so I do appreciate that.
Yeah, I'd actually suggest that that's a really good example of why looking at these things is important, because if we just say all lots should be 60 by 100, then we push against some of the things that are more important, like environmental preservation or following topography or things like that, whereas if we can find a way to provide more flexibility, we could still get the same density, but accommodate some of those other issues that influence how our plots are designed. So I think it actually strikes right at, if it's done right, how it might really help and balance both issues.
So public versus private infrastructure. One of the things that we heard from our technical groups is at least allowing the opportunity to have that choice of public versus private infrastructure when they're doing new subdivisions. Currently, right now, for the most part, if you're doing a two, three lot short plat or something of that, everything is typically private anyway. So this is really getting at more of the larger subdivisions. And one of the reasons that staff believes that this is a good thing to look at, and we are somewhat encouraged by the opportunity to do additional analysis, is there's a lot of infrastructure out there the city continues to own and maintain. And the question is, do we need to own and maintain all of it, or can the associations do that and somewhat have, and let them have some ability and control of how that should be done? The other thing it does is it possibly, it lends, again, in these larger subdivisions, the opportunity to be a little bit more creative and have a better utilization of land when you are faced with competing interests of having to provide your stormwater management, having to provide your critical areas and et cetera, and they just go on and on. So again, it's another tool, possibly to provide some flexibility, but again, with the main goal of trying to increase the utilization of land.
Just for the benefit of everybody, one of the comments, I think one a developer made at, or an engineer maybe, at our work session on this was about how you might have a road that only takes up 36 feet or something in width, and if it's public, it has to be in a 60-foot right-of-way, and so that eats up a lot of land. And if it's in a, if it's private, it might take up a 40-foot right-of-way, or easement, pardon me, and that gets 20 feet along all the, all the whole run of it that could be better utilized for development. So that was an example that someone brought up that was kind of a real-world example that kind of resonated with all of us at the work session, and I think even Brent, one of the Public Works, Brent Bolden, Public Works actually kind of seconded that, where he's seen that occur. So that was, that was just an example that came up at our, at our subcommittee meeting.
And we're clearly aware that there will need to be those private agreements in place to ensure that the maintenance occurs. I mean, there's additional responsibilities, those are well-known, and at some point, there's risks to developers, is do they want to impose those restrictions on future homeowners, and are homeowners willing to take that on? So there's a whole gamut of so much information that's going to be reviewed as we go through each of these, and I mean, we could talk about them for a very long time. Pipe stems. I introduced last time what a pipe stem lot is. Some people call them flag lots. Some people call them panhandle lots. You can call them what you want. But essentially what it is, is one lot behind another with a very long projection typically that provides access, call it a driveway, out to the public right-of-way. And there's a history behind pipe stems. Before pipe stems were introduced as the norm, which they are almost everywhere, this access was given by easements. But what was happening is that people were relinquishing the rights to the easements. And then there were all these issues and lawsuits, and finally, the municipalities stepped in and they said, whoa, stock, we're going to regulate this. So one of the things, again, that we would like to look at as an opportunity is to eliminate the requirement for pipe stems. But again, one of the things that we've at least identified is we have to ensure we don't go back in time and create the same issues that resulted in the pipe stem regulation to begin with. So one of the things that we believe that, in our analysis, that we would bring forward to you, is that there would be a required easement, but the city would be a party to that easement, essentially saying that that easement cannot be revoked or relinquished without the approval of the city of Bellingham. So that gives the assurance that those lots will always have the rights to access, both for utilities and for vehicular in those areas. It's really an underutilization of land. Some places it's 30 feet, some places it's 20 feet. Where it starts to make sense is when we can get to 13 or 15-foot side-by-sides, so you're having potentially three driveways and 30 feet. That's starting to make sense, but again, it's not necessarily needs to be a requirement. But we want to be able to do that analysis to tell you what our findings are. Preliminary plat amendments. We briefly talked about what a preliminary plat was, and that's any subdivision that's 10 lots or more. And it goes through two phases. The first phase is it goes through the public hearing process to the hearing examiner, and there are a list of conditions, preliminary plat conditions, that are imposed in that approval. Sometimes, because it is so preliminary, when they actually go into civil engineering and they go into design and/or they go into construction, some things aren't quite the same as when it went through the hearing process. Currently, in our existing codes, our ability to look at that threshold of difference is so minimal. So what we want to be able to do is to provide some analysis on this, to see if we can't establish criteria, potentially as to, what are those thresholds of when change is still consistent with the hearing examiner? Is there criteria that we can use to support that? And on the converse, when we come to the conclusion, it's so different, you need to go back through the hearing process? There's some predictability to the developer, so that they can have a range of how far they can deviate. Sometimes there are better lot designs that come out of this. Sometimes a homeowner goes, wow, I'd really like to have this lot, but I want it like this. So we want the ability to be able to judge those amendments against some criteria. So that's kind of what, what has come here has been identified that the codes are lacking direction, they're lacking assurance, and we want to be able to provide that both to not only developer, but we want to be able to provide that to the neighbors as well. So those are-
Go ahead, Jeff.
Actually, can I skip back to the pipe stem for a minute? I just didn't get the gears going in time. So is the thought of replacing the pipe stem concept with easements, or is the thought having both tools still carried forward? You know, you still have pipe stems as an option in the future?
Those are all options that we've already identified that we'll need to evaluate. And there may be places where pipe stems make sense. We don't know. And so those are some of the things that we want to evaluate. I know that I can share with you of all the 12 members in our, initially in our technical groups, every single one of them unanimously said, get rid of it. And we're obviously not there yet, because we're not in the process to define that, but we do, we need to look at what are the impacts of not having them. We know they work, but we also know that there's trade-offs with having them, and so we want to be able to explore that. But that, that may very well be the option, and that's some of the things that you're going to see later when we start to talk about performance-based. One of the things we heard from the technical groups as well is they want options. You know, do they do this, or do they do this, and what's the better outcome? So maybe that is a menu that we create within that.
Well, the reason I was asking that, as you know, that's the one thing here that I actually have had experience with you on. And, you know, that was dealing with a vacant lot in the middle of two other lots, where both houses have been built so close to the lot line that if somebody else built anything in that intervening lot, it would be a disaster. You know, basically, it'd be looking at a wall five feet away. So the solution in that case was for our neighbors and ourselves to buy that lot, put a pipe stem in, glue the, do a lot line adjustment, and get the density to work out for the site. So it was a very useful tool for that particular circumstance, and I'm just trying to figure out how that would work for easements. And I know this is overly specific at this point, but I would just all of a sudden realize, well, wait a minute, are you talking about easements as being a way to supplant the pipe stem approach, and then thinking that there was actually a really good use for a pipe stem? And I'd hate to see that go away for some specific things or not be in the toolbox at least. So I guess we'll just see what comes of it.
Yes.
I'd like to pick up on that. I happen to live on a situation where I have a pipe stem. I think you've been there. And I would not want to have an easement across my neighbor's property, because I now control that entire driveway up to the, up to the street, but I'm understanding with an easement, then that just allows you to use another person's property, but they can use it as well.
Potentially. Most of the situations, we require joint access when there are pipe stems. So what that means is if you have two-lot subdivision or a three-lot subdivision, all two or three lots are using that common driveway. So whether it's, yours is a unique situation-
Right.
... and that there is nobody else that's required to share it. But there are some circumstances in our existing code where we require that. So the question is, does it have to be real property, or we're establishing a property line, or can it be done with an easement? Those are standards. Next, we go to will be process. Site analysis. I will tell you that with technical groups, at least initially, this met with some reluctance because they feel, as the subcommittee brought up as well, is this truly another step in the process? Because that's clearly what we don't want, is another step in the process. And the idea here is not that. The idea here is what we see- The idea here is what we see often are finished designs at our pre-application conference, where staff has not had the opportunity to review stormwater, we haven't had the opportunity to review soils, we haven't had the opportunity to review how this proposed development satisfies our comprehensive plan in terms of parks, open space, arterial network, and all of that. And then we're sitting there in this pre-app, and we go, wow, you didn't do this, 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 and this. Go try again. So the concept here is to be able to provide that opportunity, whether it will end up being a requirement in the process, or whether it'll be an option. Again, those are some things that we're going to need to analyze. Is to give them that opportunity to essentially determine what portion of their land is developable, and then they can begin to work with that, knowing that, you know, it may be, okay, well, we want to do this, or we want to do this, and, you know, and have some flexibility with, within that. But land development is becoming so complicated, that what we are seeing is that each discipline isn't als, isn't always necessarily looking at the other disciplines' work. So you have engineering doing one thing, you've got the geo doing something else, and they're not coming together, or you have a wetland, you have an environmental planner on the job. So it's really trying to invite and to create that provision, where we can look at a raw piece of land with some technical information to start defining what the needs are, and what, basically, what the carrying capacity of that land is, both in terms of public infrastructure as well as individual development.
So it sounds like there's a lot of overlap between this and what a buyer would normally do as part of their due diligence in looking at buying a lot for a particular thing, I would think. Is this something that, that you would see as being a fairly defined step, where, say, a seller of property would probably want to do this, so they know what they have to market, and that would be done at the front end of the whole, you know, piece of property, piece of property for sale, potential buyer? Before that even happens, there's this, this package that gets done, is that review? And then you go through, and somebody gets in and proceeds with whatever development based on those constraints. Is that kind of a thought? So that it would be not necessarily even part of a development process? It would be something where somebody would find out the parameters on a potential piece of property, and it would be documented, and it'd have, not a city approval, but have conducted that first step as part of identifying the, the use for the land?
I think it could be both. I think it could be used during a feasibility, whether it's the owner, if the owner wants to take that, or a prospective purchaser. The thing, the thing also in this analysis, or in this site analysis for consideration that was discussed, is Bellingham is very unique in that the large vacant land holdings are held by very few. And they've been held for a very long time. There isn't a lot of opportunity, really, within the central of the city to do these big developments. They're all on the edge. And they're left for a reason, because they're probably our most challenging properties, whether they don't have infrastructure, they don't have great access to fire, they don't have any road networks. I mean, they're critical areas. I mean, you could just go on and on and on. They've got the nicest forest, the nicest tree cover. I mean, they're, they're out there, but there's a lot of, there's, there's going to be a lot of competing interests at those properties. We want to provide that opportunity as well to those, to figure out how is it best to develop? What does the comp plan say? What is all this? It's not that the information isn't out there, but we find when we come together, like in our pre-application conference that we have right now, those are so productive, because we bring, we bring all departments together to review proposals, and so we have this unified look or review of these draft proposals. What we want to do is to avoid, that we had actually, maybe a month ago, is a complete finished design, and we were like, you got to provide a trail, we need this road through, we need, we need, we need. And it was basically go-do again, where had we begun at the very beginning with them, we could, all these items could have been identified. It's just meant to be a tool, not a hindrance. So we don't want to add that process step to be, oh, my God, we got to go through another process. And it may not be applicable in all situations, or it may. Maybe it's combined with a pre-app. I mean, there's so many different ways and variables that can be added to this. But again, we don't yet know that, but we're just wanting to explore. They do this in many other municipalities, and we want to better understand, how does it work? What is the feedback from the developers? You know, is it, is it working? Isn't it working? How would you do it differently? Would you continue to, I mean, if you could get rid of it, would you get rid of it? I mean, those are the type of things that we want to be able to explore.
I think one of the things that I would add to is we really want to ensure that we're getting a coordinated review, and a coordinated review from the city's side, as well as the, the property owner's side. And what we've seen in the past, and Kathy gave the perfect example, is we, where the, the private entity went out, did everything that they thought they were supposed to do, designed this nice plat, and then came to us, and we said, well, gosh, our comprehensive plan says we need a north-south road connector. How are you, how is your, how is your project going to address that comprehensive plan requirement? And what ended up happening is you spent, the, the, the property owner ends up spending so much money in the upfront, and maybe they, they don't do a thorough review of all of our comprehensive plans and all of the rules and regulations, and we end up losing time, costing the, the property owner money in ways, in ways that we probably could have avoided that if we would have had this upfront. And one of the things that came out of the technical, or the, the subcommittee was, well, can we achieve that with just a checklist? So if, if the city staff says, okay, here's the checklist. If you want to do something, you, you need to make sure that you check this, you need to make sure that you check this. And if, you know, maybe it's not this additional meeting or this additional review step, maybe it's just a checklist. Again, those are options that we may be able to do, to ensure that we're getting the coordinated review early on, and we're not running into these big-ticket items too far down the road.
Is a pre-app mandatory for preliminary plat right now?
Say that again?
Is, is a pre-app mandatory for preliminary plat application?
Yes.
So to understand this, the problem you're getting is almost like people coming with too complete of a design to their pre-app. This is a tricky one. You almost are asking people to do less work for the pre-app, right? I mean, maybe that's too much of the how, but it's almost like saying, if you're going to do a preliminary plat, you should only go this far with your pre-app, and then let us help give you the advice.
It's possibly framed a different way, is we may be considering breaking the pre-app into two sta, two stages. Where one is we're truly looking at the land and the needs, and then the other is the actual design. And then how does that work with fire, public works, you know, for serve, you know, providing in the infrastructure and all of that?
So that's more the how, is like, do we split it into two? Do we do one? I understand the issue now. Any others?
Okay. Administrative departures. Currently, what we are observing is, because of process, and a lot of people who come in for land development are very eager for decisions, they may be forced in making that decision. Do I comply with code, knowing it's not the best, it's not really what I want, but it's something I know I can do? Or do I go through a variance process and risk it, and maybe not get what I want, or, but it's a process? And more times than not, they are compromising their development, because they don't want to go through that additional process. And there are times when we wish we could look at it and say, gosh, it's, you know, you've got a requirement for a five-foot setback, I'm going to just give an example, and this new property line is going to create a four-foot, 11-inch setback. I mean, in the scheme of things, is that, is that a departure? Is that something we can consider administratively, or is that something that truly needs to continue to be vetted through the public process? Some of the administrative departures that we've looked at, also in terms of performance standards, is, can we look at alternative project designs that while they're still meeting the overall intent, they're complying with zoning in terms of density, and, you know, housing types, and those type, and those types of, of standards? But maybe internally, they're given a little bit more flexibility, because they don't really have the impact to, you know, the adjacent neighbor, where they need to, you know, ensure compatibility. There are a lot of prescriptive standards in our code. Almost everyone is a prescriptive standard. And there are so many times when we would like to be able to be creative, to create that better design. We hear it from the developers, we hear it from the architects, we hear it from the engineers, we hear it all the time, and that, can't we just look and consider that? And we go, yeah, but you got to go to the hearing examiner, you've got to have a hardship, and you've got to have all of these. And then they're, they're like, we're not interested. We don't, we don't want to go there. So the idea here is giving us the ability to go explore, are there parameters within a threshold where we can say, a departure is okay if? And then we define what that if is. We don't know what this is going to look like. I mean, we honestly, this is, this is such a vast item. This in itself may take a subcommittee all of its own meeting, just to go through these, because there are so many variations to this. There are many other municipalities in the state of Washington, Oregon, across, that have administrative departures. And it's something that we have contemplated throughout the years in Title 20 as well, which is our land use ordinance, to allow some departures. Infield Toolkit allows those departures, and it's working. So those are the things where we would like to be able to go explore, bring it back, and say, is it working? Is this going to work? Isn't it going to work? Or, you know, what are the thresholds?
Well, I was just going to say, I would really support whatever leads to creativity, as opposed to somebody coming in saying, I just want to follow this menu, and they're not a real good cook, you know? I mean, it comes on with, where they could throw in a little this, a little that, and something we're all better off. I just, I would love to see us head in that direction.
An example that I dealt with personally on my own home related to this is the front-yard setback provision that you guys have, that allows you to encroach into the front-yard setback if a certain number, percentage of the homes on your block also already encroach. So if the front-yard setback's 20 feet, but everybody else in the block is at 15 feet, then you can get the, an administrative approval, which I utilized a couple of years ago, to encroach to that same common line. Is that kind of the idea? Like finding ways for staff to be able to administratively approve things that are
It could be one of those.
Quantifiable like that? Yeah?
That's probably more Title 20, but yes.
Yeah.
But looking at lot width, I mean, if you have a requirement for 50 feet, and you're at 49 feet, I mean, and we look at neighborhood character, and we look at utilization of land, I mean, those are the type of things that, you know, is it going to fit? I mean, and what are the thresholds that we can define with that, to ensure that there will be a fit? And maybe these are the give and take. You know, maybe they're given this, but they've got, or they, they take that opportunity, and they give us something in return. I mean, those are all, those are all things that we need to at least explore.
Going with administrative departures, you know, one of the things I think would be really important is making sure there's a, a context that the review's done in, that there's, it's not completely arbitrary, you know, that they're, have a guiding set of objectives that they're using to either approve or disapprove a departure from code. Has there been any discussion about an appeal process? If you go for a departure, and it's, it's not granted, is that just it? Or is that where you would go to a variance?
Exactly. And those are all the things, is, is, is the appeal essentially the variance? Because to go through an appeal, and then have the hearing examiner say, oh, no, that doesn't work, or we agree, and now you got to do a variance, well, have you already considered the merits, or what? So we, we need to be careful that we don't create a process that's going to hinder another process that's an opportunity as well. So, yeah, we do, we do need to look at that.
Needs to be quantifiable, not subjective.
Right.
Yeah. Jeff?
I know we've talked about the, giving the director authority for various things in previous agenda items over the years. And I guess one of the issues that comes up, that from my recollection, is, is there a public review loop that's either a noticing requirement, or getting input from the public that's obviously a step down from the hearing examiner process? But still, it doesn't hap, there's some transparency involved, and there's not just, these things go in, get negotiated, and they just appear, and nobody really knows what's happening until it gets built. And I guess I have heard that from the public in, in previous meetings. So I think it's a great idea to have administrative departures, but I also think it's a great idea to make sure that there's a public noticing and review loop somehow, even if it's just a, a notice, and if you have comments, provide comments by a certain date, and it's no more, no more formal than that. I would hate to see that something like that go through without having that level of transparency. So that's a, a comment for further digestion. But we've heard that before, and I can fully anticipate that if something like that comes along, it's in the final package, it's seen as a, an authority grab by the planning director, and we'll hear lots of comments, and be really nice to deal with that upfront, and have some kind of transparency involved.
Totally agree. Subdivision phasing. Again, similar to site analysis, I'll say that this piqued curiosity of many of those in the technical group. And the, the idea behind this is, state law doesn't give us a lot of direction on how to phase subdivisions. Some of the, some of the subdivisions or preliminary plats that we have, I like to use easy numbers, so let's say it's 100 lots. To, to think that a developer will come forward and do all the street improvements, and create all those 100 lots at one time, is simply unheard of. The carrying cost of the lots, the market, and absorbing the development of those lots, I mean, it's, even in the best of times, we weren't seeing that. I think there's one in the City of Bellingham that I could think of that that happened, and it was 107 lots. So developers choose to phase. So for example, they may come in with 20 lots, do all the infrastructure, the get-what's-called final plat before city council, start to construct and build all the homes, and when those are almost done and, and built and sold off, they come in for the next phase, and they come in for the next phase. Our codes don't regulate how that happens. And we're not sure that the codes need to regulate that, but we know that we have some interesting situations, where we have, for example, a preliminary plat right now that was done in 1999. Granted, it was done with a wetland stream ordinance, which is now way far gone, and we have our new best available science. But they're vested to those regulations. And when we go 10 lots at a time, 15 lots at a time, which we have no way of, right now, regulating those, you can imagine what 200 lots, 10 lots at a time, how long that's going to take. And the question is, is it too long? I mean, should vesting really go on forever? And, and in part, that's what we're getting at here. Our transportation networks change, our, our open space needs change. I mean, there's so much that changes in those planning periods, that we don't know necessarily if there should be limitations on the number of lots in each phase, and how long of a time you have to do your preliminary plat. Maybe you break your preliminary plat up into phases, so that you've got your first phase, and you have to come back for your second phase. I mean, that's getting into the how, but there's so many different ways of doing that. And as you can imagine, some of the, some, some of the, and even at the subcommittee, some of the members who spoke, they were like, whoa, you know, what, what's going on? And, and we knew this is going to raise that issue, but I think, but staff thinks it's worth looking into, and the subcommittee, and actually, the technical group, when we met with them, they at the end agreed, yes, it's something that should be explored. So our code is silent. So right now, what it says is your preliminary plat's good for five years. State law says that. You have to do your first phase or your final plat within five years, and you have five years to do every phase. So if you can imagine a 200-lot subdivision, 10 lots every five years, you can do the math, it's a long timeout. So the question that we're, so what we're, what we want to explore is, should there be limitations? Should there be a minimum number of lots, a maximum number of lots? I don't know. We're, we're just want to be able to do some additional exploration on that.
Jeff?
So is this strictly applying to subdivisions outside of, say, planned developments? Because I, I started thinking back to the issue... Because I, I started thinking back to the issue that we dealt with, with King Mountain and the difference of opinion related to how you do mixed use development and how you phase that when you're dealing with the market, you're dealing with planning expectations and how you do phasing when it's not quite so simple. It's not just these 15 houses or these 20 houses, it's trying to create essentially an urban village. And I don't know if that was just such a unique thing, it's not even worth talking about, or if it isn't part of this because it's not a regular subdivision. But is that part of what you're thinking about? Is like when you're dealing, having a consistent policy, so when you start looking at larger developments that are potentially urban village sized developments, this would apply to that too, or not?
I think it also provides the flexibility within that. So it, it can also help the developer in that way because they may be able to come back into some of their phasing plans and say, okay, on these phases, we want to change these and, and they want to present something different. King Mountain was such a unique example in that, in that context. There would have been an overall land use approval for that and then subdivisions built within. I mean, it would have been, the subdivision ordinance at that point may not, most likely would not have been the driver of what was dictating development on, on that piece of property. And this is really only applicable to preliminary plats. So again, we're talking 10 lots or more. And we don't see this issue with smaller subdivisions because the infrastructure is so minimal, the lot numbers are so minimal that we don't usually see those phased. Where we see them is when you get into the higher numbers, say 50 plus, 70 plus, something of that nature. They can just sit around for a very, very long time. And it's just a question, is it worthy of exploring?
Any other comments on Group A?
So the, the, before we jump to Group B, the subcommittee kind of recommended that each of these is worth exploring the how. And so I'd be, I'd like to get the opinion from the full planning commission, if there's any of these that they feel, you know, don't warrant further consideration, I guess. And if there's none that don't warrant, using a double negative, then we can just assume that we should keep this list moving forward into the, into the sub, next subcommittee meeting. Anybody have any issues with any of these particularly?
Not to eliminate them, no.
Okay. Yeah, I think they're all great topics for further consideration. So, hearing that, I think as a body, we're okay proceeding with the list.
Okay. One of the things that I, I guess I would ask is, Phyllis said not that we would eliminate, are there any that the rest of you think that we should add? I mean, that was one of the things that, that we wanted to make sure that everyone on the, the planning commission agreed with that. And maybe there's things that we didn't or that we missed. Kathy's gonna get through maybe the Group B and maybe I'll ask that question at the end of Group B because there's all, there's several in there that we just believe are so important that they need to be included. So maybe the things that the others may have expected or wanted may show up here.
I had two particular items I want to ask about, but I don't. I had them written down as Group B, you might think they're Group A, so I'm, I'm okay waiting to bring them up till the end. Does anybody else have anything at this time to add to the list? I think this is a good time, if you have any ideas, that's, I have a couple of things we've just never talked about that I thought of over the past month, so. Jeff?
Well, this, this may not be the way to look at this, so I'll start that way. But I guess one of the things that I always kind of, is rattling around the back of my head is, there's a, a fair amount of appropriately zoned land for development that has not been developed in the city of Bellingham right now. So when we look at our growth population projections, we look at our infill capacity, there's a lot that's already there that hasn't happened for one reason or another. And I'm, I'm just kind of circling the wagon here, circling the loop, whatever. When you look at things that haven't happened, is there a sense of why they haven't happened? And if there are additional things other than what's here that have proven to be barriers that you've heard, that have caused us to have these things that are our land supply? They're here, they're zoned, but it's not happening. And I guess I just want to check, you know, is there something else that's out there that we should find out about or we should think about that could be on this list that could solve that problem?
The number one thing that we hear is that all the easy land has been developed. So what you have left is not easy. It's not flat, it's not free of critical areas, it's, you know, I mean, you can, we can go on. So all the easy stuff has been developed and a lot of the other, the stuff that's left is very challenging from a different, from many different aspects. And so one of the things that we heard in our technical group was, okay, yes, all the, the only, the hard lands left, well, how do we get the most efficient use of the land? The, the land that's actually free from critical areas, the land that's actually free from roads and stormwater requirements? How do we, how do we best utilize that land in an efficient manner? So that's, that's really what we're trying, one of the things that we're trying to get at here.
I think the other thing that I would add to that is, as, as we staff go through this process on our, our daily business, we're clearly identifying that there are two types of development that are remaining in the city of Bellingham. One is infill. And that's truly when you're going within the existing neighborhoods that have really strong built characters, they have existing infrastructure. Are those regulations equal to those that are what are referred to as greenfield developments? When you're on the outside that don't have any infrastructure, don't really have neighbors, but yet will have a demand on the transportation system, no doubt, and a demand on, you know, the needs for utilities? So, we, we're really seeing that there are possibly two different sets of development that we envision that the city of Bellingham is going to see happen. And can we write one set of regulations that do both? Is that where performance standards come in? Is that where some administrative, whatever that word was, sorry, departures come in? You know, so those are some things that we're gonna, that we're gonna struggle with. Because I think we can all at least generally agree that what we see on the outside is not what we're seeing happen on the inside. We don't see the cul-de-sacs because we have an existing grid system in our existing neighborhood. So, it's, we, we're mindful of that as we move through this. I, I don't, we certainly don't know what the outcome of that is gonna be, but that's kind of getting to, to what you're saying as well is, why hasn't the land been developed? Well, so far we've had land within easy access to develop. That's gone. And it's, I mean, I like to phrase it, we have the most beautiful rainbow of wetlands along the entire north of our city. That's a barrier from, being able to put in a lot of density is not a, a negative barrier, but I mean, it's to development, it definitely adds obstacles. The further east you go, the less infrastructure you have. And obviously west, you have the water and south, you have the, the hills. So, I mean, we, we are confined geographically and also environmentally of what, of what we can do. And we cherish our wetlands, we cherish our open space and our parks and the demand for parks increases as development increases. And so all these things are competing and we're gonna try to strike that balance the best that we can when proposals come in.
Right. And the, the only reason I asked that question was, I think if you take curriculars and transportation constraints and some of those hard things and set those aside, you look at what's left that makes a lot hard to develop. And I just wanted to make sure that you, you check that tick list of all the things that, that come into that hard to develop and that we're not missing anything. Because I just, I look at that land supply and I know it's there and for some reason, some of these things have not been happening. So, that's all.
Ali, you had a couple items?
No, I think I'm okay.
Okay. Okay, so moving towards Group B. Again, just to recap, these are primarily meant to address chat recommendations, remove redundancies in code, comply with state law and other various reasons. So again, we've broken them up into standards and process because they are clearly different in how we view them and what role they play in the subdivision process. So, going through standards, we've presented short plat time limitations and just as I talked about the phasing for preliminary plats, when a lot receives approval of a final plat, which means it's actually created, there, there's a, there's a vested timeframe that is associated with the development of that lot. And it's all over the board now. So for, for fun, let's just say it's five years because of the economic downturn that has gotten very complicated. So for fun, let's just say it's five years. So if a lot is created by final plat, it's vested to the rules and regulations to the preliminary plat for five years. So if a lot isn't built on, say for six years, someone comes in to build, they're subject to the new regulations. So that's in a preliminary plat situation. Those rules do not exist for short plats. And there are case law, there's case law out there that deals with the time limitations or vesting, as we call it, for short plats. And that's something we want the opportunity to go explore as to whether or not short plats are vested forever. And we, we believe, again, just similar to the, it's kind of in, it's kind of under the same theme of plat phasing is, there, there, there's a limitation that seems appropriate. We don't know what that, what that may be. And maybe at the end of the day, we determine that there isn't, but we would like to explore if there is. Final plat MyLars currently, and this is really very technical, it's really more in the surveyor realm and those drafting the, the actual documents. But as you may imagine, uh, we have many different firms producing MyLars and producing different information on those. And we want to form a checklist essentially that would identify what are the very minimums? And most of it is covered by state law, but to be able to provide that opportunity as to what is needed in order to demonstrate or to show on those MyLars. So it's a very technical minor issue, but we want to give, we want to give notice of what those requirements are that we're looking for so that we can hopefully reduce the time, the amount of times that we have to review these documents before they actually get recorded. Legal lot, one, currently right now, and, and we, we talked about this a little bit back in December, but a, a legal lot is defined as either a lot that's been created through the subdivision ordinance process or was created by deed prior to the city's first subdivision ordinance in 1964. And some of the issues that have come up is that, well, lot line adjustments were actually not implemented till 73. So if it was truly an adjustment and not a short plat between 64 and 73, are we holding it to the same standard and should we be? Because they didn't have any rules for lot line adjustments. So, we may be punishing or, or critiquing a lot that unfairly, but our codes don't say that. We don't have those opportunities. And one of the other things we've discussed, at least among staff, I mean, our first subdivision ordinance was in 1964, which is a very long time ago. And do we need to go with that, back that far anymore? I mean, at some point, do we call uncle, you know, and say, okay, it doesn't need to go back to 64, maybe it goes back to a different version of our subdivision ordinance or something? It's, what is defining that legal lot? We find situations where like in 1965, a neighbor sold off five feet of property to their neighbor. That was an illegal subdivision. And what we sometimes have to force these people to go through, it's, it's pretty onerous. So we're trying to look at it from a practical standpoint of, can we even do this? And, you know, the laws may say we can't do it, but we want to be able to explore that.
Kathy? This is one of the items I had a comment on.
Okay.
If I can just make it now. I think that's a great topic in general. I'd also like to see us have a discussion about lot consolidation and the definition of a legal lot. Because what I've found in personal experience working with people is that we might have two lots that were platted and created in 1948 and they're legal lots per our definition, but someone built a house on top of both of them at some point after that. And my understanding of the city code or policy interpretation, whatever you call it today, is that once that structure's put on top of those two lots, they're consolidated for the purpose of development. And even if they might be big enough to accommodate two separate lots in that zone, like let's say they're 5,000 square foot zone and the lots are 5,000 square feet each, but the house sits on the middle of them. And the only way, like the city will allow you to pick that house up and move it over and then you don't have a house on both lots and you have two lots, boom. But what they won't allow you to do is adjust the boundaries of those two old platted lots underneath a structure. And the city of Seattle, for example, just as one example, does allow you to adjust the boundary lines underneath the structure. I have an experience with that. So it, it's not a huge deal, but it, it's just an example of what you just described, which is kind of creating an onerous process step for people to get to the same conclusion. In the instance that I just described, you'd have to do a subdivision in the city of Bellingham. And if that could be accomplished through a lot line adjustment, that might make life easier for people. It's the same end game, as long as they meet the density. So that's a topic I'd like to have us discuss further.
Okay.
Just because I have some personal experience with those situations on at least three or four different occasions.
No, I think that's a really good point. I actually think that it's also included in a couple of the ones that we're already going to look at.
Okay, that might be, yeah.
Lot standards, the lot width and things like that.
Yeah, that's a good point.
That, the administrative departure, you know, there's all of those things, plus looking at, again, the legal lot when it's defined. So I think your, your comments about that have, they're, they're included, they may not be in draft, but.
They're captured.
They are captured here, definitely.
I have a feeling there's a lot of overlap between these different things, but I appreciate that.
So, moving on to the fourth bullet is decision criteria. Currently in the subdivision ordinance, there is only one subdivision type that has decision criteria by which we make our approval from, and that's a lot line adjustment. So staff would like to provide some decision criteria for the decisions that we actually make. Lot averaging, lot averaging, we actually have a provision right now in the ordinance for that. And essentially what that does is, it allows you to create lots that are less than the minimum densities provided the overall area of the site can withstand that density. So again, keeping easy numbers, you're in a 10,000 zone, which would say all lots have to be 10,000 square feet and you have 20,000 square feet. And let's say the house is situated such that you, when you draw a property line, one lot becomes 10,500, but then that leaves 9,500 for the other lot. Well, there's a lot averaging provision that says, because the overall has enough for two and no lot is less than 90%, which would be 9,000, you could do that. The question is, is 90% the appropriate number? Can we go less? Should it be higher? And those are some things that we would like the opportunity to look at. And many municipalities have these, so this is not a, it's not an uncommon tool. Some are very aggressive in their lot averaging provisions and what their thresholds are. So, again, it's just having that opportunity to go back and look. It's worked where it's worked and it's mostly used where pipe sims are because we don't allow the area of the pipe sim to count towards the overall lot design. And that's really in the city of Bellingham what it was designed for. And we think it could be broadened for some other purposes.
That, that could be utilized really well in existing, you know, areas where you have structures that are confining your buildable footprint too.
Yes, exactly. Yep, totally agree. Cluster subdivisions, these are a very unique subset in the subdivision ordinance. And I say that because they offer the most flexibility, but also require probably some of the least useful or functional attributes of the plat. So, for example, again, not talking about density, you still have to have the density to develop the property. But what it does, it allows you is to reduce your minimum lot size. So even in a 20,000 zone, you can reduce your minimum lot size to 4,000 square feet. And the trade-off of what our code would say is, well, you have to give up 15% open space. And at the time that this provision was imagined, there were no critical area regulations at the time. And essentially, it was a way to offset those critical areas while still maintaining an overall density and providing that flexibility through lot size and lot dimensions and street standards to, in order to maintain that density. And I think the question that we're truly going to be asking ourselves is, do we even need a cluster provision anymore in our subdivision ordinance? Because is everything else going to cover that? ordinance? Because is everything else going to cover that? Does our critical areas or in our comp plan with our, with our parks and planning and open space, are we already there? And we know the issues about creating tot lots, which are just private open space, open space areas, whether they're improved with the playgrounds or they're just open in private subdivisions. The city of Bellingham does not have a good track record of those being successful. So do we want to require that? And if we require that, then I think we need to do something else to make sure that they work. And the liability insurance is the number one thing that we're hearing, is that these homeowners associations simply can't afford it. So here they are having a requirement, but yet can't do it. And so there's all these competing interests. And I think I would like to be able to, that the staff would like to be able to go back and look at, what is the fundamental basis of a cluster subdivision? Is it still needed, or can it be achieved elsewhere? So it's not the concept that we want to get away with. It's just whether or not it has to be a separate subset of the subdivision ordinance. Then the others, performance-based standards. And Kurt always does a better job than I do of explaining what this is. I kind of look at it as a give and take. And this kind of goes back to what our technical group has talked about of wanting to have choices. We, they, they, they give these examples of this is exactly what code says that we shall do, but maybe this is what we want to do. And if we do what we want to do, maybe there's something more we have to give in exchange for that. Maybe it's design, maybe it's improvements to a public amenity or something of that nature. So it's kind of that give and take. Again, we're not talking about density. We're truly talking about adding some flexibility, but they're giving something in return for that. It could be reduced street standards with maybe wider sidewalks or something of that nature. So maybe sidewalks one side, but that sidewalk's wider. So it's sort of how do we, you know, how, how do we look at those kinds of things?
On the performance-based standards, you know, when I look at these, you know, standards, this is probably the one item that has the most creativity available to use. And I'm just wondering, as you work through this, are we looking at any other municipalities that have utilized these types of incentives and how have they worked and drawing from those experiences?
So the idea is, is when we come back with ideas, if we say the city of Seattle or the city of Versar Island or whatever, we want to not only show you what their code says or how we've manipulated to kind of tailor it towards Bellingham, but also to be able to share with you how it works, what would they do differently, and what does it look like implemented? And I mean, because we need to understand that in order to know if it's going to work in Bellingham. Because, I mean, Bellingham is, is unique in a lot of ways. But I think sometimes that uniqueness has been a hindrance to us, because we do things the way we've always done it without providing that opportunity to do it a different way.
Yeah, a lot of the, you know, on the performance-based standards, depending on how those were structured, you know, that they really could supple, you know, supplant cluster subdivisions in essence. I mean, it wouldn't, I don't know that that would need to be its own subitem, but.
Yes, I think we are, that is the general intent of what we presented there. So moving on to process. Currently in the city of Bellingham subdivision ordinance, we do not have provisions for alterations and vacations. And that is a requirement of the state that we do have those. So we will be implementing those, and we will be starting from scratch. But we will also be looking to other municipalities to see how they do it. And I can already tell you, there's a very broad range of, some have just put in a statement that you have to comply with RCW. So they've satisfied. And there's some that actually have a process for it and will weigh the pros and the cons of each. Final plat. So we've talked about a preliminary plat and then going through phases, and then after building the necessary infrastructure and satisfying all the preliminary plat conditions, they go through the final plat process. Currently, the final plat process is not defined in our code. It says what you need to do, and that is satisfy your preliminary plat conditions, and you need to prepare MyLars and go to council. There are no expectations given to the developer at the time included in that. I mean, there, there's no regulations. It doesn't define what the application submittals are. It doesn't even define when that happens. Can they do it before and during construction? Should the public facilities contract, which is when they start initiating construction? Should that be the start of the final plat process? We want to be able to have that ability to kind of create those expectations, not only for staff, but also for the developers going through the process as to what, what is going to happen? Once you get preliminary plat, what happens with each phase? And that's one of the things that I have felt that has been lacking in our subdivision ordinance and many other staff members as well. So I think that's something that we need to incorporate.
I think that, I just want to make this point, that I think that this might have been one of the most common things we heard from the, the people who participated in the subdivision subcommittee that were on the, the development side, engineers and, and developers and things like that. This one's really important to nail down. And that, this, Kurt, you're probably going to say the same thing, that we've kind of got this covered, but this is where my other comment comes in, is I don't see anything specific in here about the, the coordination on the city side. Another comment that was raised a lot that relates to this is like getting different comments from public works and planning and parks on the same project. As, and that comes up a lot during the final plat process, so maybe that fits into this concept. But I think it's really important that when we talk about the how, we also try and set some, I guess that's part of setting review timelines and submitted requirements, but also setting some expectations for the city staff about, you know, that we can expect, not we, but the community can expect, you know, when we go through these processes.
Yeah, I actually have some great news for you on that then, because actually, we understand that that's such a big issue from both the, the development community, the property owner's side, as well as the city staff's side, that it's actually part of our lean process, looking at the development process. So if you recall, we're looking at lean from a pre-application standpoint, land use enablement, a public facilities construction standpoint, and then our building permit. So kind of the, when you first think about what you want to do to when you're actually opening the doors to whatever it may be. So part of our ongoing lean process includes looking at the public facilities construction process, which is really kind of getting at some of this.
Yeah.
So I think some of the things that you're identifying here will actually be covered in that. And we're, that lean process where we're going to look at how we do it and establish some timeframes and things like that, so that it's more predictable, is actually occurring this first to second, second week of May. So we'll be taking care of that, hopefully, sooner than later.
Cool. So they'll track, and we'll probably be able to get feedback as we go through this, developing the how, about what you guys are already doing to address that. Cool. Okay, thank you.
And we're not necessarily anticipated that some of those will be codified, but there'll be, there'll be expectations that will definitely be identified. Sometimes the time limits, when you have the staff discretion, there, we're finding some municipalities are very strict in that, you know, the, the city shall have comments in 10 days, and there are some that just say should be generally done within. And so, you know, there's some, it's, it's a level of expectation that we'll need to refine or define as, as we move through this. The next is code redundancies. And this one is actually kind of a fascinating one. The subdivision ordinance right now in itself can almost be viewed as a mini development code, and that's troublesome. So the subdivision ordinance has requirements for street standards, while some of those street standards are not consistent with the street standards in Title 13, which is where all the street standards live. So the same with, same with stormwater, and there's some critical area comments and, and street trees as well. So the idea here is to look at referencing other code sections. So that also to assist when the city goes through and modifies their code, we don't have to hunt and peck every single section of our code of where something might live. And we're just starting right now the street tree provision. And talking with Jonathan Schill, he's like, I don't even know where all these provisions live. And it's going to be fascinating to find how many places in our BMC it will talk about a requirement for street trees. It should live in one place, and they should reference. So we're trying to clean it up, but not only to assist us, but hopefully to assist the users. Nonconforming uses. We have a provision in Title 20 right now in our land use ordinance that deals with nonconforming uses, but it doesn't deal with the subdivision of nonconforming uses. And we've had a few situations. There's not many, but when they do come up, it's, it's worthy of discussion. And we have some situations in the city where they've been defined as nonconforming uses. You may have two single-family homes on one lot for financing reasons and/or just the desire to sell one of them. They want to be able to subdivide. Well, our current ordinances don't allow that because the, they don't have the density of the site to do that, but they clearly have two very legally established uses. So we want to at least look into that opportunity and to see, again, by keeping the rules as they are now, is that a hindrance? And are we actually, you know, causing, you know, unfair or undue hardship where maybe we can help that situation? So we're kind of looking at those. The other one that came up from chat were the single-family condominium subdivisions. And the, the, the best example that we can give of where this is occurring right now is, is a development called West Cordada Green. And it was in the county when initiated. It's out off Aldrich Road, north and south of June Road. So it's between the Community College essentially and Aldrich Road on both sides of June. And that was approved in the county as a binding site plan. And under their rules, you could do a single-family under a binding site plan, which was a condominium. If you go out there and look, you'll go, wow, this is a great single-family subdivision. The roads are a little bit smaller, but other than that, everything looks the same. But there's no property lines. They're all air condos. So, but they've had some flexibility, say more of a multifamily nature, where they've had some flexibility to look at how they put pedestrian connections through and how their landscaping works and what their street standards are. But it looks like a single-family subdivision. So again, it kind of goes back to the private infrastructure, but it goes a little bit broader than that in actually looking at the legal mechanisms of how you do, how you do that. And that's a condominium declaration versus a Mylar. So there, there are some, some differences with that. State law has some very clear guidance as to what a condo declaration must include and not. And there's actually a lot more authority within those to impose liens and to do assessments. So you can actually collect the monies to pay for that, where homeowners associations actually lack that authority. So again, depending on where, where the discussion goes, there's, there's an opportunity that was asked to be considered as a possibly an alternative housing type. But, and the last is lot line adjustments. We have a lot of interesting situations with lot line adjustments, and some, Ali, the ones that, that you brought up. But one of the things that we, we would like to further explore is truly what is a lot line adjustment? And we've had some situations where we've had legal building sites that have been defined by our, our parameters, but yet completely inundated with critical areas. So is it really a legal building site? And what they've done is they've taken multiple of these lots, and they've adjusted them to pull the lots out of the critical areas. And those are the type of scenarios where we want to explore, is that really a short plat? Or was it really a lot line adjustment? And to look at all the, just to look at all the different facets that, that go with that. And truly, when this, when the state adopted or accepted lot line adjustments, is that what was really meant? Or was it really for doing those boundary line adjustments between two developed lots with existing residences and, you know, maybe want to move a five feet this way or five feet that way? So I think it's time that we really explore if we have branched out possibly a little too far in our interpretation of lot line adjustments, or can we go further? I think, it feels like we're at that point. So.
Thank you. Any, any comments at this time? Garrett?
I, I know you're wrapping it up, but I, I just, I don't want this to be perceived as a negative, but I think a lot of the times when we look at comp plan amendments and code updates, there's a sense sometimes that they're being done to meet a GMA requirement or they're being done to meet, you know, a, a funding requirement. And, you know, looking through this, I really don't get the sense that that's the, the spirit of this. I think you guys are doing a nice job trying to make this process better. And it's clear. And you're, you're taking your time working through it. I think there's been good community involvement. There's more to come. And I really, I really feel like at the end of this, it will be an improved product. So.
Tom?
Well, I don't want to get arrested for sexual harassment or anything, but I think you guys deserve hugs if you can, can get rid of some of those code redundancies that I have been screaming about for 35 years.
That's the first time, first time I've heard that from you.
I think maybe we should just ask the same question. It doesn't appear that there's anything that really struck a chord that needs to be removed from this list. And, you know, surely this isn't the end. So if, if anybody up here goes to bed tonight and thinks of something else, we can communicate it to staff and, and add it to the list. I mean, there's going to be a point where there's no more adding, but I think we're not there yet. Is that fair enough?
I totally agree. So if you look at your purple cover sheet, as you make a, we're asking for direction. We're not asking for a decision or a recommendation necessarily. But if you would provide a motion that's consistent with that recommended action, that would be most helpful and appreciated. And the question is whether or not, Ali, you want to entertain more public comment at this moment?
Well, there's not that many people here. Would anybody like to make a brief comment related to this? And I would, I would ask that anyone, come on down in a sec, but if, if you have a new comment to add, that's what we'd like to hear at this time. And we'll just limit it to just three minutes each, please.
Thanks. Yeah, again, Eric's got, just real quick. Again, I just want to speak for the people of the neighborhoods, things like subdividing. That, that is a harm to the people of a neighborhood, especially a mature neighborhood. I don't think we should look to a mature neighborhood as a place for more utilization. That's a, that's a misleading term. It's a harm to the people there. And neighborhood character, I, I, I hear that sometimes almost dismissed. I don't mean to sound combative or anything, but I, I would say that neighborhood character is not a soft or an ancillary aspect. It is the defining, the defining element of a neighborhood. It is not just something to be overlooked. Neighborhoods are, are, are homes of, of people. They're not cattle. They shouldn't be looked at hurting the most efficiently. As an engineer, I, I design a thing to be very efficient. I wouldn't look at people's homes to manipulate them and crowd them the most efficiently. So I, I would like to see that language toned down a bit. Pipe sims, and, and then the new, the new idea of easement, a city essentially owned or right-of-way easement. That, that idea sounds deplorable. It sounds like putting the city's fingers on our homes and our lots. If a homeowner wanted to decrease or take away that right to build in their back, that should be encouraged, actually. That maintains the character and the open space of that neighborhood. Again, we're talking about mature neighborhoods here. So we, we wouldn't want the city's fingers to, you know, get into our homes and our, our, our own lots. Again, it's elbowing, you know, the city is elbowing their way into our neighborhoods. A house behind a house is a really bad idea. A lot of times, the front will become a rental because nobody would want a home in their backyard. So the homeowner that subdivided or pipes them or whatever would live in the back house, and their rental will be up front. back house, and their rental would be up front. I live right across from a very bad rental. We see, you know, bad renters there all the time. I think that's Judge Erig's, one of Judge Erig's homes. So flexibility and discretion by the city for variances, that is gradually chipping away at our minimum standards. And we have these for maintaining our city and our quality of life. So I would not want to see that. Mr. Jeff Brown, you talked about why the current land supply in Bellingham is not utilized fast enough. And I'd like to just, you know, be someone who speaks, try to speak up for the land. My background is not environmental activism, by the way. It's engineering. So I'm just getting into this. I'm not a radical. I try not to be a radical. But land, you know, I would say land should not be looked at as a supply, not our lowland forests in our local neighborhoods. That's a real asset to the people, to be able to walk near a forest. I would say it should not be looked at as a supply to be burned up as fast as possible. So we want to maintain that.
Eric, you've got about 30 seconds.
Okay. I do hear now and then that, you know, comparison to Bellingham with other municipalities, you know, we're not other municipalities. We're not Seattle. We're not San Francisco. We're not Los Angeles. We don't want to become them. People are coming up here because they don't want to live in those areas. So we are not other municipalities, and we don't want to become those. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
One of my, one of the items that gives me a lot of heartburn is utility easements, mandatory widths.
Excuse me, can you?
Brian Jones.
Sorry, yeah.
Thank you. Sorry. So yeah, through this, through this code revision, if we could perhaps look at mandatory utility, exclusive easement widths especially, shared easement widths, not so much a big deal, but exclusive easements where they may, you know, 20 feet for sewer and then another 20 feet for water. Separation only needs to be 11 feet, you know, outside diameters. I know that's development code, but it really, you know, stresses on how narrow your street can be when you get utilities with mandatory exclusive easements.
Thank you. Okay, that looks like it. So Kathy, do you have any closing comments at this point, or?
I don't really. I think after talking for two hours, I think I've framed myself.
Yeah, thank you. That was a lot of information. And I think it's very helpful for us to walk through it, even though it does take a lot of time. So staffs asked for a motion?
I moved to approve exhibit C and D in the staff report and direct staff to continue working on the subdivision ordinance.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second to approve exhibit C and D and direct staff to continue the work on this with the subcommittee. And let's just have a quick vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. And again, I just want to reiterate that to the planning commission and to the public as well, this community involvement line was running through the whole thing. So I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Kathy, but the intent is that the public should be able to provide their comments throughout this process continuously.
That is correct. And we do have a webpage devoted to this update process. And if anybody would like to have a direct link to that, if they don't want to search our website, we can definitely give that to them as well.
Okay, that's great. And also to fellow planning commissioners, I think we should all plan on giving our feedback as it comes to us as we move through this. This is not just, I see the subcommittee as an opportunity to, because this gets so intense, you know, to refine the discussion, but I still see this as a full bodies decision, and we need to have everybody up to speed on this as we move forward. So that's just where I'm at as chair, and I got the benefit of being elected chair of the subcommittee too. So that's speaking for the subcommittee as well. Thank you. Okay, so that's it for our public meeting. We'll finish public meeting, and I think unless you want to add anything, but I think we're just going to go through old new business and discuss our next meeting and director's report of sorts from Kurt, maybe?
Sure.
Okay. So I guess there's no old and new business, just to be specific, and our next meeting is the 23rd.
Yeah, I just wanted to, just wanted to let you know that your upcoming meetings, on April 23rd, you will be meeting with the city council planning committee to discuss the urban growth area boundary. Then on April 30th, you'll have a work session on the UGA boundary. And April 7th, or excuse me, May 7th, you'll actually have a public hearing on the UGA boundary. So lots of UGA discussion coming up for you. Just wanted to let you know that. Garrett?
I have a question. Are you, I'm not trying to interrupt.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. On the UGA, you know, there's been mention of this environmental impact statement. I'm assuming that was, what was referred to was done by the county. Is that the one that was recently published? You know, as we're working through the UGA boundary, I mean, how much information are we going to get coming back from the county? How much transparency is there going to be between where they're leaning on, you know, growth boundaries and where we're recommending as a body and then to city council ultimately making a decision?
I think that's a great question for next week, when you really get into it. With the EIS that's out there right now, the city is formulating responses to that. So we will be commenting and providing the county comments on the draft EIS at this time. So.
We'll talk more about that next week then.
Yep. And I just want to add one thing related to that process, because we have three meetings in a row on this as a body. And there's a deadline for our council to make a recommendation. Is that accurate to the county?
Yeah, but at this point, June.
It's June. So I just want the planning commission to understand that we are not going to be given the luxury of drawing out our discussion too much further, because the council still has to look at this and debate it and get a decision made. So I just want everyone to be aware that these might be some pretty thick meetings because we really need to get through it. That's just the tone I've received from planning director and some other folks. So not to say that we don't get the time to look at it, but I just want everybody to aware that, you know, we really have to buckle down and really get into the details and get comfortable with this over the course of the next three meetings. Is that fair enough to say?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess the one other thing that I wanted to make comment on, excuse me, have a comment that was raised earlier about the Waukesha County Planning Commission is typically, your meetings are on the first and third Thursdays, and typically, Waukesha counties are scheduled for the second and fourth. So we generally don't have this. When both the committees or the commissions are busy, sometimes we end up doing back, you know, weekly meetings. And so I think that's what's happening at this point.
Thank you. Any other comments? Jeff?
Actually, so is the meeting next week going to be at a regular time, or is it like at the council committee time? Is it six or is it seven next week? Seven?
Seven.
Same time, same place?
Here. Yeah, okay. Phyllis?
I was just going to ask, how's the configuration going to go? Are we with some representation of council? And then are we all gathering together up here, or how are we going to do that?
We're going to put the council down there, right?
Yeah, well, I'm sure. They may not see it that way.
That's a good question. Do we know how we're going to?
We've dealt with this. We do it with, sometimes the county council and the city council will have joint council meetings, and so we rearrange the area so everyone's on the same level. And we'll definitely make sure that we consider all of that. We won't put people here and people there, so.
Great. Okay, well, thank you. I think we're ready to adjourn. Thanks a lot.